...to silent or vibrate please, if you have those on. And then also, we just asked no applause. We know you love the candidates, but we'll just keep it a no applause evening after each The format for tonight, we're going to start off, each candidate has been randomly selected in the order for answering the questions as well as the opening and closing remarks. We're going to start off with a two-minute opening remark, followed by a question and answer session of about four or five questions. Each candidate will have up to three minutes to answer those questions, and then we'll have two minutes of closing remarks afterwards. To start off the evening though, we have our district councillor, Michael Smart. He is in the audience today. He's actually running unopposed, so we invited him to not participate, but we did want him to come up and say a few words. So with that, here's Michael Smart, District Six councillor.
(coughs) Just stand right here. Thank you Eric, thank you for the kind introduction. Thank you folks. As Eric said, I'm going to be brief. He said he was going to pull the hook on me if I spent more than thirty seconds. Kevin eyeballing me, already timing, sorry. So, thank you for the invitation. Thank you for coming out. My name is Michael Smart. I am running for district councillor. I want to continue that work on some of the things that we've been working on, certainly on the district and certainly in the council. We have the Delahunt Parkway, which is the east-west parkway to get that completed. We have the widening of Route 18. We have the Columbian Square, traffic issues that we need to get resolved, and as this project becomes more successful, then that project, Columbian Square, will be resolved. But, of course, we have the issues here at Southfield and the success that we want to continue here. I can certainly tell you, I met and at least spent many nights with many of you here, working on the issues, and I'm committed to being your district councillor. I'm committed to seeing this project to be successful. I hope that you would consider me on November 3rd, and I appreciate the time. Hopefully that was long enough or short enough, Eric and Kevin, thank you. So, thank you very much, and I'll be here in the back after the event if you want to ask me questions, maybe questions that were not asked of the candidates here. I do want to thank my wife, Ann, who's here with me tonight. Without her, I could not be able to do the things that I get to do to help you folks and help the town on the council side, so, thank you buddy, I appreciate it. And I will turn it back over to you.
We can clap for Michael. Okay, we'll start off with opening remarks. As I said, they were randomly chosen, so we're going to start off with Jane Hackett, two minutes.
Thank you very much, Eric. Thank you Eric, and thank you to your association for hosting the event this evening. My name is Jane Hackett, and I'm running for reelection as councillor at large. I have deep roots in the community. I grew up here in South Weymouth on Thicken Street. My parents are Pat and Jack Hackett, and my extended family owns Olden's Pharmacy in Columbian Square. My husband, who's here, Colin McPherson, and I are raising our family in the Homestead, Weymouth Landing area, and we have two small, we're blessed with two young children. Our son, Colin John, is in fifth grade at the Abigail Adams School, and our daughter, Caitlin, is in the third grade at the Murphy School. They'll be the fourth generation of my family to graduate from the Weymouth Public Schools. I graduated from Union College with a degree in political science. I've taught at Noble and Greeno School in Dedham, and worked for ten years as a team manager at Liberty Mutual Insurance. In 2000, I was fortunate enough to become chief of staff to Mayor David Madden. It was a job I thoroughly enjoyed. To me, municipal government in your hometown is the best all-you-can-eat buffet of all things interesting. From watering sewer capacity, to restructuring government functions, to zoning, to providing government services, local government is where government hits the road, and I thoroughly love being involved in it. In 2007, the administration of Weymouth changed, and I became a full-time stay-at-home mother, which is also an extremely challenging and rewarding position. But, I did miss being part of the government process, and when I saw deep, deep cuts to education and public safety in 2008, I decided to run for office and to try to help. I very much enjoyed my time on the council, working with my fellow councillors, neighbourhood and business organisations, and school councils. Together, over the last four years, we have worked hard to increase funding to the school department, streamline the governance here at Southfield, to increase revenues locally by $2 million, and to give you more of a voice in what goes on here in your neighbourhood. And we have finally reopened Legion Field for all to enjoy. I am running to continue to try to help move our town forward, and I look forward this evening to discussing many issues continuing to face our community. Thank you.
Thank you Jane. Next, we have Mike Malice.
Thank you Eric, and I thank you, the Southfield Neighbourhood Association, for hosting this tonight, and having a chance to reach out to the residents here, and all the new residents that are here at Southfield, welcome to Weymouth. My name is Mike Malice, I'm up for reelection as councillor at large. I've served as a councillor at large here in the town of Weymouth for the last fifteen years. I'm a lifelong resident of Weymouth, member of the local 369 Utility Workers of America. I'm also a Realtor here in town with Malice Realty Group. I resided my entire life in the town of Weymouth, serving as a councillor at large for the last fifteen years, and serving the residents of Weymouth. I've always prided myself on the level of service I deliver to my constituents. Constituent services is very important to me. I believe an elected official needs to be accessible, committed, and dedicated, and responsive to the residents. This has always been a top priority of mine. I currently serve as the council's Budget Management Committee Chairman, overseeing the town budget. I have a great committee that I serve with. I'm Vice Chairman of Parks and Recreation Committee, serving with Jane Hackett as Chairman of the Parks and Recreation. I served as Chairman of Parks and Recreation for the past thirteen years. I took a lead role with the administration and my fellow councillors of bringing Legion Field back to the residents of Weymouth. I'm also a member of the Education Committee and the Senior Citizens Committee. Serving on such a wide variety has given me a great opportunity to reach out to the residents of Weymouth and work with a great group of youths and seniors. I stood here before this organisation two years ago, speaking at the same forum, addressing concerns facing all of you in the uncertain future of the Southfield project. I listened to everybody's concern on the failing project at that point, as did my fellow councillors. I made a promise that evening that I would work hard for all of you, and I feel that this council, myself, and the councils worked very hard for the Southfield community from January 2014 till August of 2014. We held numerous meetings into wee hours of the morning with many concerns, as was many of you people who were there attending those meetings, and I think we're in a much better place now, the Southfield project. And I look forward to your questions tonight and the forum before us. Thank you.
Thank you Mike. Brian McDonald, you'll be next.
Thank you Eric. Thank you very much to Southfield Neighbourhood Association for hosting this evening's Candidates Night. I have lived in Weymouth since I was two. I was born in South Boston, and my folks moved to Weymouth when I was two. When I first ran for selectman, when I was out doing marketing, a woman asked me if I was a townie, and I said, "Well, I've lived here since I was two," and she said, "Well, you're not a townie, so I can't vote for you." Which was fine, I lost the election, and had her family voted for me, maybe would have won. But, when I first ran, I ran for town meeting as soon as I became eligible to vote. When I turned nineteen years old, the eighteen-year-old vote had just come in, and I ran for town meeting. I lost by eight votes at that time, and had my family voted for me, I would have won that one. But I think they were afraid of a future in politics, and I pursued that endeavour. I have been a town, had been a town meeting member for many years. I was a member of the Board of Selectmen. I was a, I served in the state senate. And then after watching the Southfield project bog down, if you will, I became frustrated and wanted to get back involved. And we stand here tonight, or sit here tonight, and all of you who live in this area, the neighbourhood of Southfield now, see a bright, bright light at the end of the tunnel compared to what we have been dealing with. I think the future for Southfield and the town of Weymouth is huge. Weymouth is comprised of five neighbourhoods now, North Weymouth, East Weymouth, Weymouth Landing, Homestead, South Weymouth, and now Southfield. And it's great to have, welcome, Southfield residents to town, and I think we're going to continue to try to be a positive voice on the town council with the experience that I bring to the table. Again, I work really hard for every neighbourhood in the town, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight and look forward to your questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you Brian. Next up, we have Chris Permiano.
Thank you Eric. Thank you, Southfield Neighbourhood Association, for hosting this tonight. Unlike the majority, the vast majority of the councillors, I'm new to Weymouth. I've been here for thirteen years. Being new to the community, coming in, into the community, it was a choice to move to Weymouth. We had all the options from Boston South, and when my wife and I did our analysis of where we wanted to raise our children, two at the time with one on the way, we chose Weymouth. Great location, the schools were top-notch thirteen years ago, had a sense of neighbourhood, yet, it's fifty, with 55,000 people, that neighbourhood is what drew us into the, into the community. About three years ago, four years ago, I became an active citizen, because I saw the place that I chose to move was changing, and it was changing not for the better. And so I decided to inform myself, much as you are and have been, inform myself on our community, and became, became active in it, looking at why it's, why it has changed. And, right now, I see us changing again. I see us looking for a new vision, a new vision for the future, and I think things like the rebirth, and I'm going to call it the rebirth of Southfield, is a positive change, a positive step forward, not just for the confines of this area, but for the entire community. Three years ago, I was here, and, and I was confused because Southfield was seemingly a different community, yet you are Weymouth residents, and you need to be treated like Weymouth residents. And I was confused because me, coming into it as, as a new member of the community, just assume that you were members of the community already, and we need to embrace this. And I look forward to answering the questions tonight, and I look forward to a new Weymouth tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you Chris. Pat O'Connor, you're next.
Thank you to the Southfield Neighbourhood Association, to you Eric, Matt Brier, and to the citizens for a better Weymouth who are recording this for use on the internet. My name is Patrick O'Connor, I've been a town councillor for the past ten years. Serving this town and this community, and the people of it, has been my life's true greatest honour. Some of the things we've been able to accomplish, given the economic conditions over the past ten years, I think have been quite, quite remarkable. This council has worked together, hand in hand, in order to get things done, such as Legion Field, which if you drive by now, is a recreational gem restored. The legislation at Southfield, as councillor Malice got into, that was a lot of work. That was a lot of hours, that was a lot of councillors missing kids' events, calling on babysitters. You know, we worked real hard to make sure that this, which I truly believe is the economic engine for this town and for the South Shore, was a success. I got into government very young, just as councillor McDonald. I got into government, I ran, I put my name on the ballot when I was twenty, and I got elected at twenty-one. I did this because, after graduating from Weymouth High School, I went, I had the opportunity, the privilege to go to school in England. And when I got back from England, every single time, one time for a Red Sox World Series parade, when I came back, I saw a different town. I saw the drug epidemic that currently still riddles this community, and there's really, you know, very little that you can do other than work real hard to try and solve it because it's a societal issue. I saw some of the lack of educational opportunity begin that I had, that, that didn't exist. And so I decided to not sit on the sidelines, but put my name out there, put my name on the ballot, and work real hard for this community. I think that I have done that. I really would appreciate your support, and respectfully ask for one of your five votes on November the 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you Pat. And Bob Collin is next. Thank you all. Chris, listen up, you'll be the first one to answer this question. Our first question of the evening is, what would you do to make Weymouth great? What is your vision for the town?
Well, I'm going to take the first step. What is our vision, what is my vision for the town? Well, my vision for, for Weymouth is really working with the administration on developing a single vision, because we all have different ideas what, what a vision for the town should be, but from a, what's practical, what's achievable, is we need a, we need a leader within our community to say, "This is the direction of the town, and this is how, this is what we want to do." From there, it's our job as councillors to make that vision come to reality, working with zoning and using my thirty years of business experience, bringing in retailers, bringing in business, bringing the business community to help achieve, be that, that revenue engine that we so desperately need to fulfil that, that vision. Holistically, we all want rainbows and sunshine all the time, and, and definitely what ideally would be for our traditional vision is, the schools are funded, the teachers are, teachers aren't running out to fund their classroom activities, parents don't have to go onto Facebook and sign up to donate money to get Robotics Club funded. We want, we wouldn't want a drug epidemic, we, we would want more police officers. I mean, those are just inherent pieces of a, a better Weymouth, and a Weymouth that we really deserve. And I, I think we can get there with the proper leadership showing us the vision of a, of a better tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you Chris. Brian McDonald, you'll be next, same question. What would you do to make Weymouth great? What is your vision for the town?
I think Weymouth is, all things considered, is great. Weymouth has, has been strangled by a, a lack of a commercial, significant commercial tax base. Quincy has a huge commercial tax base. Braintree does with the South Shore Plaza. Hingham doesn't need it because they have huge properties with houses that are worth a bundle, and they have a smaller population than we have. Weymouth has been constrained, not by inability of leaders of the town, and not by the desire, not, not having the desire to try to make Weymouth have a great commercial tax base. Route 3 goes by Weymouth, and there isn't a, a car that fit into the mould, because we were so close when development happened to the South Shore Plaza and Quincy, that we were just kind of a bedroom community, a drive-through community. At one time, the Edgar Station facility in North Weymouth generated 65% of the tax base. And when the deal was put in place for, that's changed hands so many times, I, I'm blanking on the name, but for the power generating facility that's now, it was a bad deal for the town. It expires in 2020. I strongly believe that we should be proactive and, and talk about dealing with those folks now, and say, "Look, open up contract negotiations, start the contract negotiations now, and we'll, we'll be less onerous on you than if we let it run out to 2020." Let's get the, let's get the talks going in order to bring that, that payment in lieu of taxes to the town in, in step with what it ought to be. We're being grossly underserved by that, that arrangement. Southfield is the economic salvation to the town, not withstanding what might happen at the generating facility. This, when this build-out occurs, it's going to have huge economic impact on the town, and I believe myself and the council, other members of the council, worked really hard to, to drive the bargain, to get that legislative fix put in place. Previously, ninety percent of the development was going to happen in Weymouth, and Weymouth was only going to get forty-five, fifty percent, not even fifty percent of the, the revenue generated by the, the previous plan that had been put in place. That plan was insane. That's why I ran to, and to get involved. I thought the plan, we were outvoted three to, three to two on the preview, on the tri-town board, and we weren't getting our due when it came to the economics that were going to be generated by the, by the, by the development. L-Star is a great, off to a great start, they've been here a very short time. Things are moving in the right direction. I, I'm a positive person, I like to think positively. I've always thought that Southfield was, had huge potential for the town of Weymouth and for the South Shore, and I want to continue to be a part of that process and make sure that, that the dream that we've all thought would, was possible, becomes reality. Thank you Eric.
Thank you Brian. Bob Collin, next, same question. What would you do to make Weymouth great? What's your vision for the town?
Well, now it's on. Weymouth to me is, is a wonderful town to be in. You know, I've been here for many, many years, and I really enjoy it. I live across from Legion Field, and it's just wonderful seeing all the people. And I see Legion Field as people walking around all the time, and it's really home. You go down there, everybody says hello. And you know something, it's like, that's what we want Southfield to be. When people are here, they're living, they're friendly, they're talking to each other. And I've talked to people who lived here, and they said, "Oh, we have cookouts, we have this, if the, the football game's going, everybody talks to each other." But one thing we have to realise, we do have problems in Weymouth. And one of the biggest problems we have in Weymouth is, everybody says, the schools, which I have no problem, but I'm a public safety guy, and I'm a public works guy, I'm a school guy too. But you only have so much money, and everybody says, "Oh, well, you should do this and that." You can't take away from one, one department, especially the police department. You're in the police department here now, and their drug unit, they have one lieutenant and three officers. And one of those officers is in the task force, but that's okay. And you read in the, in the ledger, and, and our drug unit is doing a great, great job, and you say, "Oh, you know, they stopped a car and they arrested a guy for dealing." And you say to yourself, "Jeez, that's pretty good. That's easy." Well, it wasn't easy. It probably took them weeks, months to get all this information, dealing with informants. When you deal, you have to deal with informants. You don't go to the average citizen and ask him, "Where's the trouble?" You have to get somebody that's in the gang. And what we have the problem is, we have people coming in from, from other cities and towns, dealing here, plying their trade here. And there's two things, there's two drug situations to resolve, the addiction, and also, you have to have enforcement. We have to send a loud message to these drug dealers, "You come to Weymouth, we're going to arrest you." My second thing is public safety. I'll go to the fire department. We have three fire stations now operating. We have one on North Street, up in, on North Weymouth. We have a fire station on Winter Street, right by the police station, and that has an engine and a ladder. And we also have, on Park Avenue, we have a fire station, they have an engine. Station 2 on Broad Street has been closed. And the thing is, when you close a fire station, what happens is, your response time increases. And the response time, we used to be four minutes. Now, with the closing down, that response time could go to eight minutes, it could go to twelve minutes. And I remember many times, as a Boston police officer, a young police officer, there's a fire in the city, we get a call, we do traffic, and, we do traffic, and all of a sudden, I just see smoke billowing out, and it's no big thing, all this, within thirty seconds, the whole place engulfed in flames. So we have to take care of police and fire. Now we go to the schools. The schools need money, but remember one thing, they get seventy-five million, they got about seventy-five million dollars last year. That's not chump change. Also on public works, that starts up a lot of time, I'm going to stop. Where'd you get him Eric?
He's as brutal, I saw him from last time.
He's doing his job.
I know, he's as brutal on the time as I was last, two years ago. Next we have, let me look at my list, Pat O'Connor, you'll be next answered. You're young, would you like the question again, or do you remember?
You'll remember it. Weymouth is a great community. To ask how to make Weymouth great, I really do truly believe that Weymouth is a great community. I would say that one thing would be, more people like you who are civically minded. Rooms like this should be filled, because the issues facing the town are important. So, some of the issues facing the town that, you know, this town council has dealt with, but the town council as a legislative branch of government, really doesn't have that final say. That final say, and sometime, we hope, with the initial spark, would come from the administration. And some of the issues, the Weymouth Landing area is a disgrace. That buildings have been held hostage by a developer for eight years, and as much as we've come out against him publicly, and done as much as we possibly can in our role, those buildings are still being held hostage, and that's exactly what's going on. There's nothing we can do. We ordered a study, we asked for the Health Department to go down to try and take a look if we can take it, if we could condemn the buildings or take it by eminent domain, but flat out, Nick DeLagace is holding that area hostage. Another issue is 3A. I think the 3A is in a major need of revitalisation, especially with a over 200, probably 300 million dollar commitment from the state by the time it's done for the four-over bridge. And that calls for improvements up until a certain, a certain point, basically on C Street in North Weymouth, and that should go all the way to the Hingham line. We should do a one, you know, all-in-one package to fix that area, because it's, it's blighted, and it really shouldn't be, because it's a gateway to our community. Actually, both of those are gateways to our community. So that would be great. And as far as some of the things that I think that we have been able to accomplish this past, these past two years that are great, we've mentioned the Southfield, we mentioned Legion Field. The first thing that I did is taking over as council president, was created a mental health and substance abuse committee, because I truly believe too many of our residents are suffering silence with mental illness, and too many people are losing their battle with substance abuse. And another thing we did was, we created the Long-Term Planning Committee, because we understand that there is a revenue problem that faces the town of Weymouth. We know that full well, and what we're trying to do is, we're trying to put all of the tools that we possibly have together as a council, and come up with as many possible solutions to these problems that we have facing the town. So I think that what we've been doing is, we've been tackling these problems head-on. We understand and acknowledge that these problems still exist, but do know that we are working hard every single day to address them. Thank you.
Thank you Pat. Mike Malice, you're next.
Thank you Eric. I think we all have a vision for the town, that what we want this town to be. I've lived in Weymouth my entire life, my family is all here. Weymouth's very important to me. But again, it comes back to revenue, and we need to generate revenue, and I think that this project up here, we've got to this point, this council has worked so hard to get to this point, it's the first time that you can feel good that we see a light at the end of the tunnel here, with L-Star, that we can generate revenue back to the town, that can help us with such projects around town as our parks, our sidewalks, our streets. And that's what we need, you know, is, we all have a vision. The Landing is a disgrace, it's, shouldn't be there. It should have been attacked a long time ago, he should have been thrown out, you know. It's, we all have this vision, and I think we're at a point now that we actually see that this could happen, some of this stuff. As I said, two years ago, when I was here before this same group, it was very disappointing on where we were going to be here with the Southfield project. It was basically dead in the water. And now, when you hear the rezoning plan and the revenue that could be generated, it's fantastic, you know, and I think that's what we need to do. We need to attract a commercial base, you know, it's huge to get the commercial base into town. So these are all things, and one thing we have is a great leadership here with this council. We all work, whether it be the other night with looking into the zoning of the town. We voted to send that over to Ordinance Committee, to look at the zoning, take a picture of it all, and see where we are with everything. So these are all things that need to be done, and that's what we're hoping to do over the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you Mike. And Jane Hackett, your last.
Thank you. I too, I, I believe that families make Weymouth great, and our sense of community makes Weymouth great. From parent councils, you know, at school levels, to Weymouth youth baseball, and Weymouth youth soccer, and all of the tremendous opportunities that we provide in this community for our youth, I think makes Weymouth a very appealing and affordable place to be, not to mention our, our tax rate is extremely low. However, we are struggling to fund basic services that attract families to move to a community. And by struggling to meet those needs, education, public safety, we are losing families to other communities. And I believe we do need a major And I believe we do need a major investment in our schools and in our public safety in order to keep Waymouth on a positive path forward. Southfield is significantly helping. The $2 million that we've received this year in our operating budget, can you imagine our school department, our police department budget if we had to cut $2 million from that now? Going forward, we need to increase those revenues. An area that Council Smart and I have worked on is the rezoning of Route 18, to make sure that Route 18 is zoned in a manner that will capture the success of this property here at Southfield. And make sure that it's zoned in a manner that attracts medical, to build upon the success of South Shore Hospital, hopefully for a higher tax-paying entity to come in and purchase the property. But our path, really, we are built out, and we have extremely limited opportunities for new growth. All we have is redevelopment in Southfield. And Councilor McDonald brought up an excellent point in North Waymouth with Scythe Energy, with the current power plant, and their tax increment finance agreement, which is expiring shortly. So I believe our path to the future is through redevelopment. And I think in order for us to maximize our redevelopment opportunities, we need a thorough review of our zoning, especially our highway transitional areas, Route 18, Route 53, and Route 3A. Each of them are unique, they are not the same. And each of them need to be treated individually, and zoned individually. And I look forward to being part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. For the next question, Bob Collin, you'll be the first to answer. The next question is, what is your, and actually, it's kind of three questions in one, but feel free to float around as we get within it here. What is your experience and involvement to date with Southfield? What is your assessment of where the project is currently? And what can you do as town council to help guide and grow Southfield as it moves forward? So involvement to date, your assessment of the project currently, and what can you do as council to guide it as it moves forward?
My involvement in Southfield? My involvement at Southfield has been for eight years, eight long years, dealing with L&amp;R, dealing with Starwood. You know, dealing with these people, you know, they weren't very upfront or honest. And I asked L&amp;R, and I asked South Shore-Tritown, I says to them, where were we going to get the water? And every answer I got, well, you know something, we don't have to worry about that now. Where are we going to get the soil? None of them answered that. I mean, that's a basic question. You can't have a community without water. And going to the present, Kyle Corcom, the managing owner of L-Star, came to the council, first time I met him. And I said to myself, you know, this guy's good. Every question you asked him, he answered. I was flabbergasted. And the most important, I was happy, you know what I said? You people finally have a chance, finally. You never had a chance since you came here. Steve has been here for Lamar, he's the first here, he never had a chance. He's smiling, you've never seen him smile before. Steve's happy. Everybody's happy what's happening here. And to go forward, I think the most important thing to go forward is, I'm a neighborhood association guy. I'm going to listen to the neighborhood association, and you tell me you want this, if you don't want 1,000 senior housing? I said, well, maybe we can get it down to 600 or 700. But whatever you want. But remember one thing, I'm 71 years old, I wouldn't go to over 55. If I do come up here, and my wife and I are thinking about coming up here, if they do Main Street, if you don't do Main Street, you never see Bob Conlon, but if you do Main Street, but I want a house. And I already saw the house, I liked it. Woman already owns it, I offered to buy it, but she said no, because she's happy here. And what I'll do in the future, I'm very simple. I get more information from the people. I've asked people here, that came in here, a couple of people, I said, what do you think? Because you get some great ideas. And you know what I said? Remember one thing, this is your opportunity now, this is your community. And before any changes are done in zoning, you tell us what you want, and you tell Kyle what you want. This is, if you give it up now, you're not going to have any opportunity. Because once the zoning goes into effect, it's really impossible to take out. And as Councilor Hackett says, they want to do a highway transitional zoning, Route 18, to build more, the economy up. And I'm from Southfield, and I wasn't before. And I'm so happy, I was here two years ago, I wasn't happy. You know, I felt bad for you, because you know something? It could have been me. Because you guys had promised a golf course, and everything, all these amenities. And you got the zero, you got nothing. But you will get something, and I'm happy, for my next two years, I'll be the happiest two years in the council, because I want to be with you, and I want this to be a success.
Thank you. Jane Hackett, you're next.
I've been involved in the Naval Air Station since 2000. When I was chief of staff, it was zoned and approved as a mega mall, known as the Mills Mall. I've been through two reiterations to date of zoning, one for the master plan that was approved in 2005, and then in the legislative changes that were adopted last year that transformed the governance of Southfield and made some zoning adjustments. Currently, I am optimistic regarding the current zoning proposal that's before us. I do have some concerns. I am concerned with the increase in the apartment units by almost 200. And I am concerned as well with the reduction in single-family homes from 457, which were identified when we made the changes in 2014, down to 126, in what's currently proposed before us. I do think that is somewhat of a major unit shift, housing type shift. And as I spoke earlier, I do believe that families are a cornerstone of a community, and I think we can accommodate a more diverse housing type without overwhelming our service, the services that we provide in Waymouth. Currently, again, I've said it three times now, but 2.1 million is projected in our operating budget. Our expenses are far below what they were anticipated to be in providing services to this community. We only have 25 children to date in this development, and the projection going forward is to keep it well below what we saw as financials in the 2014 analysis. I am very enthusiastic about the increase in the commercial and the flipping of the commercial, from a location perspective, bringing the commercial towards the Parkway, and moving the new proposed senior housing off towards where the commercial was going to be, which is up in the White Street corner of the property. I think an increase in the commercial tax base here bodes well both for Southfield and overall for the town of Waymouth. One of the things that I have asked for is an analysis of the proportion of commercial and residential tax base now in Waymouth, including Southfield, and projected going forward during the development program that's currently proposed under the zoning. So overall, I'm very optimistic and very pleased, but I do have some detail concerns. But I've been pleased with the developers' response and openness to being able to discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Brian McDonald, you're next. I'll give you the question again. What's been your involvement with Southfield to date? What's your assessment of the project currently? And as council, how will you help guide and grow the Southfield project as it moves forward?
My involvement with Southfield was prior to it being called Southfield. When I was a selectman, we were fighting to keep the base open. When I was in the state legislature, we were fighting to keep the base open. But clearly, it closed. And I was, when the Mills Corporation proposed the mall, I was not an elected official in town, but I did have concerns about that particular proposal. As I said in my opening remarks, I ran to get on the council because I was frustrated with what was going on up here, and I was frustrated with the lack of progress. And I believed from the very beginning that the governing process that was in place was not fair for Waymouth. Abington and Rockland constantly put their three votes together to outvote Waymouth's two votes, yet 90% of the development was in Waymouth. Made no sense. The split of the revenues that were to be generated, if anything, came to fruition, Waymouth was going to get 45% of the tax revenue generated, I believe it's 45%, and that made no sense when 90% of the development was in Waymouth. So that's why I ran. And we've worked hard as a council to move things forward. We've had some promises that were made, but were unable to be kept. But through the hard work of the council and realizing that the governing structure up here had to be changed, we worked, I think it was 40 hours of meetings, it might have been more, dealing with the redo of the legislation and getting that legislation passed. It was a tremendous effort, many, many hours were put in. And I saw the residents from Southfield come up to the meetings at the town council, the frustration that they felt, they sunk their heart and soul into a vision, and then they were locked in here, not able probably to sell because of the bad ink that was being generated because of the lack of progress. And now there's optimism. And these, the new owners of the master developer, L-Star, under the leadership of Kyle Corcom, is so user-friendly compared to what had been in place in the past. They have a vision that makes sense, the real estate market is, the timing is right. And they're going to move, I believe, more quickly than we even think. In terms of where we go as a council, I think we have to remain positive. Negative spin on things is not good for selling a product. So if we have to work things out, let's work things out. But let's do it in a way where we minimize the, we maximize the positive and minimize the negative. And I think we're in a position to do that. And with the MEPA process going to be coming along with the changes with the zoning and all those other things, I think we have to be involved as a council and try to be positive and help move this forward. And I think the vision is tremendous, and the future up here is just, it's a true diamond in the rough. It's going to be a diamond in the rough. And those who bought in early, you're going to get, you do just rewards.
Thank you, Brian. Mike Malice, you're next.
Thank you. As I stated earlier, I've been on the council for 15 years, so I've worked on this project since 2000. And two years ago, speaking before the same forum, addressing the concerns here, it was all doom and gloom of what was going on. Everybody was in panic mode. And I promised everybody that night that we would work hard, and we did. We worked hard, made that promise. And we went right to work, January 2014, held numerous meetings into wee hours. We were there till 1 o'clock in the morning sometimes. Many of you people were there, addressing the concerns. The council voted in August to make a change to the legislation. I think it was the best thing that happened. It dissolved the disastrous South Shore-Tritown, which was going nowhere and bargaining down the project, cleared the way for L-Star to come in and take it over. And, you know, the meetings that we've had, I mean, the people that came through, and as was said earlier, the promises that we had, you could tell they weren't true. People sat in front of us and told us water was coming in two weeks. It never happened, you know. And then, I felt last Monday night at the meeting, when the L-Star was in front of us, that they're actually a genuine group, you know. And I think that they're honest people. I think this project's going to move in a great way. As I said earlier, we need that, you know. And I can see a positive vibe here, talking to the people tonight. And we're going to continue to work hard. You have a very hard-working council here. You know, like I said, we meet two nights a week, you know, sometimes till midnight. But we're going to keep this going, we're going to work hard on this Southfield project. And I want to be part of it for the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Chris Permiano, you're next.
Well, my involvement to date is like you as a resident, as opposed to my fellow participants up on the stage today. But throughout the process, as the legislation was being considered, I was at probably 80 to 90% of those meetings with the councilors, speaking on behalf of a resident of Waymouth, that that legislation needed to be changed to better my fellow Waymouth residents. In addition, I also talked about why Tritown needed to go away, and holding those people accountable for why Southfield was in the position that they were at that point. My assessment of where we are today is, the future is very, very bright up here. I think L-Star, in particularly Kyle, and what they've done already in the last 160, 180 days has been phenomenal. But it's a stepping stone. It's the first visual we've seen in years of moving forward, showing progress. The proposed vision that they presented over the last couple of weeks have been phenomenal. It's amazing what somebody with vision can bring to our community. And I definitely want to be part of that vision, I want to be there to support it. How I can particularly help as a member of town council would be my 30 years of business experience. I speak the business language. I speak the language of bringing in companies, whether it's retail, medical, real estate investment firms. I get it, I understand what venture capitalists are looking for when they come to a town council to present. I get it when they're meeting with L-Star, when they're going to be before a council saying, I have this project, this project, this project. I can translate that to our council. We have a lot of legislative experience on the board. We don't have a lot of bench strength in the business environment. I think I can bring that to the table, and I can also help with the vision and growth of Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And Pat O'Connor, you're next.
Thanks, Eric. I've been involved for the past 10 years. I got involved when I first got elected in a pretty unique situation, where the development had already been voted on by the previous council. And I took the approach of, this is here, it's voted upon, where it's a project that is 17 miles south of Boston, one of the greatest cities in the world, that's got a commuter rail station, and why wouldn't we want to build it up as profitable as it possibly can be, and also as great as it possibly can? So as taking that approach, I was very frustrated with the years that followed of starts and stops, broken promises, and what I think was a tremendously dysfunctional South Shore-Tritown Development Corporation. There were points in times where I had questions about water, about sewer, which was then the responsibility of the community's quasi-governmental agency, Tritown, and the roadway and other things. I would ask then-council president Smart, and then-council president Matthews, for the CEO of the Tritown Development Corporation to come before the council, which that individual denied us, time after time after time. The auditor's report that came out painted the picture that all of us saw, a completely dysfunctional organization run by, in my opinion, government hacks who did nothing but waste the money, the hard-earned money that was being generated at this project. And after that audit report came out, I came out, my fellow colleagues came out, and we asked for Kevin Donovan to resign. And that seriously was the catalyst that led to where we are today. That audit report, followed by L&amp;R's portfolio being purchased by Starwood, led to us saying, no more. No more of your tax dollars, you live in Waymouth, you're Waymouth residents, you vote here, you're going to pay taxes, it should go to the town that you live in. It shouldn't go to some quasi-governmental agency that then takes its cut, pays their consultants $10,000 a month, and then sends it back to the town of Waymouth. Which, by the way, they never even did that. We got $0 from South Shore-Tritown. So in the legislation that my fellow councilors talked about, it was 11 months of very in-depth, intense negotiations. As I said, many councilors had to, you know, spend their entire evening there, and wake up for work the next day, and get a babysitter, because we were that involved in making sure that this was going to get done, because you are not residents of Southfield, you're residents of Waymouth. And I wear two hats in this, because I'm also the legislative director for Senator Hedlund. So after we went through the 48 hours of meetings, over 11 months, and then three eight-hour-long marathon private meetings to hammer out all the details on mitigation, we then sent the bill up to the State House with a limited timeframe to get that bill passed. I was up, running from the House to the Senate and back and forth, making sure that that got done. And as a matter of fact, there was one senator who held that bill up, who said, I'm going to use this as a bargaining chip against Majority Leader Mariano. And we sat down and we said, this isn't a bargaining chip bill, this is a community. And we did as much as we possibly could, we got that passed, and here we are today. And I think that Southfield's future is bright, and I think its present is bright as well. Whereas the past, let's hopefully forget about it, because that has been a nightmare.
Thank you, Pat. The next question, Mike Malice, you'll be the first one to answer this. What within your background or experience do you have that would be most useful to the town council if you are elected?
Well, I think I have a proven record of what I've done. I mean, I'm a realtor here in town, you know, I know the town, I've lived my entire life in the town of Waymouth. I know, I'm out in the streets every day, talking to the people in the town of Waymouth. And I know the needs of the town of Waymouth. And... And I think I've focused on what people need. As I said in the beginning, I'm big on constituent services. People call you, you need to get back to them. And I've made that my goal of the 15 years that I've been in office. And I know the town very well. I'm chairman of the Budget Committee. I've been on the Budget Committee since day one, back in 2000. So I think that that gives me great experience of knowing exactly what's going on in the town to keep in touch. That's why I love that committee. You know exactly the ins and outs of every department and what's going on, and I think I'd be a great asset to the town. I'd like to stay there.
Thank you, Mike. Next is, let me look at my notes, Pat O'Connor, you'll be the next one.
Eric, I believe that I bring a quality set of experience to the town council. For the past 10 years I've been on the council, I currently lead the council. I think that we've done, in my honest opinion, great work for the people. I think that the projects that we've been able to accomplish speak for themselves, and that's the skill set that I think that we all have and that we all bring forward, is that we listen to what the people of our community are telling us, and we try and act with the knowledge and the base that we have developed inside the council as best as we possibly can. No better example of that than is this project, in my opinion, is we saw something that was just too big to fail. And we got together and we busted our tails and we made sure that this was successful. And we led on this project. There can be people who take claim in the newspapers or whoever, but this town council led on this project, and I'm very proud of that. And that's what we bring, is leadership, is the ability to think out of the box, to be assertive, to stand up to the status quo and say, "No, we don't think that's what the residents of Waymouth are thinking." And even though it may be an unpopular decision, some of the decisions we made have been unpopular and some have even been voted down by the general public as a whole, but we made that decision because even though it was not popular, we thought that was the best decision for the town of Waymouth at that point in time. In addition to that, I have experience up at the State House. I've been up at the State House for eight and a half, nine years now with Senator Headland, so I know the legislative process inside and out. It's been an honor to serve with my fellow colleagues and to, you know, talk to the residents of Waymouth and to really hear what everyone's got to say. And as Council Malice said, constituent services is something that is so important because when somebody calls you, especially during the time that we've served with the economic downturn, when somebody calls you and asks you for assistance, it's usually the last call they're going to make because they're completely out of the ability to get this done. And it could be as easy as, hey, I haven't got my, you know, sidewalk shoveled yet. But we have received calls saying, hey, I'm out of work, I'm losing my house, you know? There were times when we were facing some serious, serious problems. And we all worked together and collectively with what I've been able to do up at the State House, sort of through that vehicle, we've been able to work together and shovel ideas and cases, you know, with each other and deliver for the people of this town that were in really dire straits. And that's something that I'm proud of, is being able to do that, and I hope to continue to do that.
Thank you, Pat. Jane Hackett, you're next.
Thank you. If I could, I would just like to say that President O'Connor truly led this council and led this town through the last review of the 2014 changes to the enabling legislation. He led the council through very difficult, contentious meetings, worked diligently with the Vice President Council. Smart is also the district councillor and led the council. And it was a pleasure to serve with you, you know, through that process, and thank you for that. As far as experience, that might be a little bit different. I was formerly the chief of staff, so I have administrative experience in town government as well as legislative experience. And as I said earlier in my opening, I genuinely enjoy being involved. I find municipal government extremely interesting, and I enjoy it and I work hard to try to be informed on what's before us. I seek others' input and their expertise on issues and then make decisions based upon what I believe is in the best interest of the town of Waymouth. Sometimes we don't all agree, and if we don't agree, that doesn't mean we're not going to work together on the next issue that comes before us. And I think that's something really great about this council as well, is that we disagree reasonably and then come back together on the next issue and go forward, so.
Thank you, Jane. Bob Conlon, you're next.
I gained a lot of experience as a lieutenant, as a day commander in the city of Boston. I worked in every single district. I dealt with the Spanish population, the blacks. Every population, each neighborhood had specific problems, and I was able to deal with them because that was my job. I had to handle that because it came directly from the commissioner, and I was completely responsible for every district that I went into. And the way we resolved those problems was, my experience was listening to people. That's all you have to do. I remember my first meeting, community meeting I had, and I had all the stats, murders, rapes, and all this, and I had everything planned, I'm going to tell them this. The only thing they were concerned about, there was a pedestrian light out in front of the meeting hall, and they says, "You know, Lieutenant, that pedestrian light, in six seconds it turns green again. We can't get across the street." I was perplexed, I couldn't believe. I realized right then and there, it's the people, you listen to them. And I have had office hours, I always said to myself, being a councilman, "Oh, you're busy in this." I'm never too busy for the people. And for eight years, I've had office hours, first Tuesday of every month, I have it at the town hall on the second floor, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. You can't make it there, you oversleep. You see me from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Frog Library. I gained a lot of experience in, plus dealing with people. I know how to solve problems. I know if there's a problem in the schools, I know if there's a problem, I know how to solve them. But with the, in the budgets, because I've listened, I listen to these directors, and I'm very, every director, Director of Public Works, I know a person, I call them up, "Hey, we have this problem, this is happening." And I get so much input. For my fellow councilors, Councillor Hackett, many times I'll ask her, "You know, I'm a little confused on this issue, especially on the tax issues." She's very sharp. She was administrator for the past administration. There's not too much Councillor Hackett doesn't know. But, you know, you can be intelligent, but not, helps another councillor. And all these councils have helped me. And also Councillor Patrick O'Connor, especially with, I'm really impressed by him, especially with the zoning. Because, you know, with the zoning, you could just say, "Well, we just have a meeting and we'll pass it." No. He's diligent on that. He's doing due diligence. We've had so many meetings, and he might have another five or 10, till he's satisfied that it's going to be the right way to do it. And I get my experience from my fellow councilors, and that's taught me a lot, and I'm still learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Brian McDonald, you're next.
And I learned a lot from Bob. Bob does have a wealth of experience. All of the people on the podium today, Saturday, whatever, have a lot of experience. We all bring certain things to the table. I started out again as a town meeting member, and I served as a legislative aide, I've served as a state senator and a county administrator, and I had my own business for 10 years. So we all bring experience to the table, commitment, I think we all bring commitment to the table. I think everyone is in this for the right thing, to make sure Waymouth moves forward. I love this town. I think it's one of the, it's a little, it's a town that has so much, and it's done so much with, under tremendous constraints, but we have a resilience and a drive to make things better. And, you know, we, Legion Field, we sat and we saw that sit fall off for so long, and then we put in place that little meals tax, local meals tax option, which on an $80, $100 bill, I believe it's 80 cents, I think that's what the math is. But it solved the problem. We've been able to fix our parks, our parks have come along, we've stabilized, finances in the town have stabilized. We all like to have more. No one ever wants to see police and fire or not get everything that they deserve to provide the public safety that the town deserves and see our schools properly funded. But again, the revenue stream has been the issue. But I think, you have to have the ability to listen, you have to almost sometimes be able to look at things from 20,000 feet, and not so much the minutia, but try to see the big picture and try to see where we're going to try to go. And I think positivity is a huge thing to bring to the table. If you're talking negatively about things, people have a negative feeling. I think Waymouth is a tremendous town, and I think everybody up on the dais has a tremendous amount of experience. And I think it's most important that you're able to obviously deal with constituent issues as they come up. But to be able to listen to everybody's perspective, everybody's point of view, pick out what makes the most sense from everybody's point of view, and then move in that direction, and I think we've done that as a council, and the fruits of our labor will be proven with the buildup up here at Southfield. That's what we did. We sat and we listened, and we took all the good points, and we tweaked them, and we moved them around, and we fixed a huge problem. And I used to sit there, and I remember at a couple of meetings, I said that if I lived up in Southfield with what was going on, I couldn't believe that there hadn't been a revolution that had been started because there was so much frustration. And we have to move forward in a way that's, the water fees that you pay for water up here is the same as anybody else in Waymouth. I remember when I first got elected, I was, who's it going to solve, where's the water going to come from? I always thought it was going to come from the MWRA. There was no other way. There's not, no other way. Well, guess where it's going to come from? The MWRA. And anyone who said it was going to be from Abington and Whitman and Abington or whatever it was, that was a pipe dream. So take the good, ferret through things, and do what makes sense in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, Brian.
Can you repeat the question? I think we kind of got off.
Sure. Their question is, what within your background or experience do you have that will be most useful to the town council if elected?
Thank you, Eric. There's a lot of institutional memory up on the stage right now, and that's fantastic. But what I bring is a little bit different, is a level of business experience that we need to be on the council. And that business experience is varying, but most importantly, a lot of it's in expense reduction and consolidation, looking at where we can join forces to increase service levels but yet reduce costs. In addition to that, what I found most important about being a good manager, a good business partner, a good business owner, is decision-making skills as far as listening to all sides of every story, getting that information, finding out what makes sense, and then making a decision. We spend so much time looking at everything in a vacuum and not seeing the big picture. We need a single entity, the council, to look at the bigger vision, looking at the bigger picture, get all your information together, then make a decision and move it forward. And I hope, hopefully, my skill set will allow us to facilitate that. The other thing too, and I think everybody mentioned it in some way, shape, or form, is we do need a can-do attitude. It's been, we've been told so long, well, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do this. We need to look at the future, we need to look at the positive, I think Brian just mentioned it, is looking at things positively and attacking it from that level. And by being a good manager, you can certainly do that. You can certainly take a look at a project, an entity, an idea, and project it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, you'll be up next. You can blame the, I'll give you the website to blame later, the random number generator.
Sure.
So you'll be up for this next question. The issue of the town council's salary has come up recently. Do you support a pay raise for the town council? Why or why not?
Well, it's a yes or no question. No, I do not. I believe in being an active citizen, and part of this is why I'm, this is my personal opinion, I'm being an active citizen. I have no problem with the stipend. True transparency, and that's what I'm all about. It costs a small fortune to run for office, believe it or not. And with everybody, everybody's, everybody's in a tight situation these days, that stipend obviously helps us and allows us to spend money on signs and events to get our name out. That said, no, we don't need a raise. This is not a part-time job, there shouldn't be benefits associated with it. This is being about being a citizen, being an active citizen, and it's volunteerism. And I do not think that we should be afforded a raise, if I'm lucky. The other part of a job is a job performance, and I think that job performance review is on November 3rd, when you cast your ballot and cast your vote, and hopefully I'll have your vote on the 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Brian McDonald, you're next.
I don't think we've, what's going on today with the, what we just went through, it's time to be looking at a pay increase for our stipend increase, or whatever you want to call it, for town councils. I think we have to move forward, stabilize our finances in the town a little bit more, see more revenue generated from what comes from up here, what gets generated from the rework of the site facility in North Waymouth, and maybe sometime down the road, but I don't think it makes sense to be talking about that at this point in time.
Thank you, Brian. Pat O'Connor?
No, I don't support pay raises.
Thank you. That was a quick three minutes. Jane, you're next.
I do not support a pay raise for the town council.
Mike?
No, I do not support a pay raise either. I enjoy my job, love my job, serving the town of Waymouth, and I'm fine where I am.
And Bob?
I certainly do. There should be a pay raise. You know, it's interesting, the school superintendent, he got a pay raise equal to the annual salary almost of a councillor. You know, it's not about money, but you have a position, and as a taxpayer or anything, you should pay them accordingly. I didn't take this job for money. Not one of us is up here for the money. But you know something? It's a matter of respect and everything, to the council, not to individuals, to the council. And I tell you one thing, I am for it 100%. I want these councils to get it because I'm telling you, this is my last hurrah. If I do get elected in this two years, I'll be 10 years, and I will not be running for reelection. But I want the pay raise because this council deserves it. And a lot of times, you know, people say, "Oh, why do you have a pay?" There's nothing wrong with that. They spend so many hours here, that few dollars they can maybe spend with their children, take them out to dinner or something. And everybody looks, and it's difficult because you have to give yourself a pay raise. I was in the union and in the military, I got pay raises, a whole bunch of them. And to be honest with you, I think I should have got more. But there's nothing wrong with a pay raise, but just the way the system is, you have to say, "Give me some money, I deserve it." And nobody here has not gone without a pay raise for over 10, anybody here has gone without a pay raise over 10 years? Show your hands. Of course, you must be a homemaker, your husband's cute. Well, put it this way here, I definitely feel it should be. And I look, you know something? We have a $144 million budget. It kind of bothers me because people say, "Well, it's not the money, it's the principle of it." And if I, and anybody out there, I'll be gone in two years if I do get reelected, but I'd be so proud to give these councils a pay raise, and I like to see it changed where it comes in from a third party every year. And just, and I'm not asking for a lot of money. My proposal will be, and I will do it, in the charter, you have to, I think it's about a year, a year and a half, don't you, for a council, before you can propose a council raise? There's a limited time, so that I will present it, and I think they do deserve it. And I see some people, you know, look, twist their head and will, why do they need it? It's just, it's a principle. And don't let principles go down the drain. Give them, give them a money. I'll be gone in two years if I'm reelected. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Bob. And you can blame the same random number generator because you'll be up next for this, you'll be first on this next question. The next question is, while the future of Southfield looks promising, Waymouth cannot rely solely on its success. What is your plan to attract business to Waymouth outside of Southfield?
You asking me?
Yeah, you'll be, you're first to answer this one.
You know something? You see in Waymouth, you have, well, you know, we're built out 95%. There's really not space, but you see some empty, some empty stores here and there. Because, you know, to bring business in, we don't have 25 or 30 acres and say, "There would develop, hey, come on in." We're dealing with the little guy. But you know one thing, you've got to realize something? Our commercial rate is $22.24. So we say 23 bucks. That's pretty damn cheap in this area. Why they're not coming in, I don't know why. We're doing everything we can. You know who's a good example is, in the council, I see him here, Councillor Lacy. He's worked for many years with the Donald Waymouth Landing. We have the owner there, it's an eyesore, Mr. Delagasse, and he's a very, he's not a very nice man, and he's not a very good citizen, but that's an eyesore, and refuses to do it. Proposals, he's brought proposals that were ridiculous, and they couldn't be accepted. And all he's doing is trying to get the council to just put pressure on us and say, "Just let me build anything, but I want to build what I want and not what's good for the town of Waymouth." And that's what you're dealing with. But actually, you can go to Hingham, you can go to Norwood, you see some of these storefronts But actually, you can go to Hingham, you can go to Norwood, you see some of these storefronts open, but I'm telling you, with a commercial rate of $22.24, I can't say why they're not here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mike Malice, you'll be next. What, what is your plan to attract business to Waymouth outside of Southfield?
Well, I think as we stated, the revenue that we'll be getting from Southfield is significant and I think using that revenue to enhance our, our town and attract business, whether it be in our squares or ever, using that money to enhance it. People aren't gonna come to these squares as you see the landing, the way it is, Columbian Square, a lot of empty storefronts. We need to get in there, do the sidewalks over, dress the squares up that are gonna enhance these properties that people want to be there. And I think that's a great way of doing it, you know, have a creative effect on doing it, use the money wisely. We're gonna have this extra money coming in, use it, try to boost the area, improve your town, dress the squares up, people are gonna come. You know, it's hard to get people into Jackson Square, the way it looks, Columbian Square, you know, put some money in, get the awnings fixed up there, do the sidewalks over, you know, enhance the area. It'll attract business, people will want to be there and that will boost the revenue in the town.
Thank you, Mike. Chris Permiano, you're next.
If you build it, they will come. And I, and I don't disagree, I don't disagree with that, but I think it starts with a clear vision. It's, it starts with a new updated master plan. If you go to our website today about our town, it talks about the redevelopment of the Mammoth Plaza becoming a Walmart soon. It talks about Stetson Building being converted to office, office and medical, medical offices. It hasn't been updated in 10, 12, 13 years, guys, at least. We need, we need a clear vision. We need to be able to communicate to the business environment. Waymouth is open. We have residents, we have people here who want you to come here and spend their money. But it goes beyond that. It, it goes to looking at zoning, it looks at the public parks, it looks at the squares and public perception of, of Waymouth. But it starts again with that vision. And part of that vision has to be schools. Good schools attract families which then attract businesses. It comes full circle. Nothing is done in a vacuum, nothing is done singularly. We need the complete picture. It can be done and I hopefully will be part of a new vision for Waymouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Pat O'Connor, you're next.
Thanks, Eric. Waymouth's very built out, 97% plus built out, so as far as attracting new business to set up shop and to create here is very difficult because a lot of them are looking to spec out, you know, a, a building rather than come in and purchase something, sort of what we have in the industrial parks and, and that. But, I mean, on this dais, as we've been calling it tonight, we have an individual who has brought business to Waymouth with Michael Malice and his brother bringing Malice Realty here. I think that Waymouth's a great place to do business in. And the tax rate is competitive, not as competitive as some surrounding communities that have the single tax rate such as Rockland, but we are competitive and I think that we provide a great service to the businesses here. I thought Council Malice brought up a great point as far as we really do need to do more to improve the aesthetics of our, our villages. We have definitely a disadvantage that we don't have a downtown, that our community is separated into these villages and, you know, some people might go to Columbian Square to do their shopping, others might go to Jackson Square, others might go to the Landing. So it's sort of, sort of handicaps some of those businesses from getting all of the business that a downtown, a traditional downtown would bring. There are some empty storefronts for sure in all of our villages and although those are empty, the business owners who own those properties are still paying property tax to the town of Waymouth. So as un-aesthetically pleasing as it is to look at an empty storefront, they are still being paid for. It's not like these buildings are vacant. So what we really need to talk about is not just a, sort of a business to buy into the town, but a business into these buildings that currently exist. And I think that's a tricky thing because you look at 3A for example and there was businesses that were thriving there and they raised the rents and those businesses left. So what can we do about that? Nothing. It's developers who, most of them do not live in the town of Waymouth, who purchased these properties as sort of rental income type of investments. They're not here, they're not part of the fabric of the community. So I would say that one idea would be to encourage more Waymouth residents to purchase commercial properties as investment incomes or as businesses themselves because I think that that will really play a role in all of this. You see the situation that goes on in the Landing with Nick Delagast. He could care less about Waymouth. And he came here and he tried to shove a proposal on Waymouth that wasn't gonna be beneficial to us, 54 units and 50 parking spots, saying that people aren't gonna use cars, which I think is ludicrous. And there were people that went to us and said, well, let's do it because it's been so long that we need to do this. And enough of that, enough of these developers holding the town hostage. We need more investment into the squares for sure and we need to make sure that rents are reasonable for businesses to come here. Because if you have a successful business and you raise the rent and you, you can't afford it, then you can't afford it. And some of these developers would rather have their businesses be vacant than lower their rents, which is dumbfounding to me, I don't understand it, but it's a tricky question to answer and that's the best that I can do.
Thanks, Pat. Sort of shooting forward, tricky, tricky questions for you guys. Brian McDonald, you're next.
Thank you, Eric. It's almost like one of those questions or situations where to every complex problem there's a simple solution and it's wrong. There is no simple solution to how we do this in Waymouth. Waymouth, you have to keep history and perspective in mind. The village is built up because back in the day when you didn't have cars, there were horses and buggies and, and you walked and they were neighborhood centric and that's what they were. And that was the beauty of the commuter rail Green Bush Line. It was built, those stations, it took a long time to get it in place. I, I died on that sort, but whatever, but they, they built those stations in the villages that were along that railroad line. And Waymouth's opportunities on the corridors that are in place are gonna be redeveloping what is there, but it's again not easy because Route 3A is, as much as we love North Waymouth, I'm from North Waymouth. It's a drive-through thoroughfare to get to the South Shore. And, and many people come and go to their neighborhood, but it's, you know, cars are going by, there's not a lot of parking, there's, so it's not a simple solution. Love to solve the problem, but it's not a simple solution. Waymouth Landing, much the same. The traffic in there and there's more parking now since the Camaro Station went in and the town parking lot area went in, but it's still, at certain times, it's a, it's a nightmare. You know, I used to drive through it twice a day and I was like, it was, it wasn't an easy place to navigate. I mean, it's, it's starting to take hold, you know, the businesses that are up there and, and restaurants and that's, and that's gonna continue, I think, but I don't think we can look at those neighborhood centers to be an economic solution to the town because they're gonna be small just given the nature of, what are we gonna start taking homes at a butt to put in a parking lot or a garage, maybe, but I'm not sure about that. So, so there's no simple solution to that. I think we have to try to move in a positive direction. The Delagast property in Waymouth Landing is a, is a nightmare. It's almost like a, you have that house in the neighborhood that you have well-maintained homes in the neighborhood, you have that one house where the, they don't mow the lawn, they don't pick up the trash, there's a refrigerator and a broken down car and, and you can't make them paint the house and you, you can only do a certain amount of things legally. I think to, to help move business forward, obviously we've talked about Southfield. The South Shore Hospital is a huge economic engine as well to the town. Hopefully with the Southfield, it'd be more of the medical, industry, medical community building up, but even along the corridor and the rezoning of Route 18 to maximize the potential, I think holds, holds a lot of potential as well. I think just again, try to be positive about the town. If you're positive about the town, we, funding for the schools has begun, has been stabilized. We have to try to keep the strive to improve that so we get our reputation back. But I remember the day when Waymouth had first-class schools and we win championships in sports and our kids tested very, very well. Some of our little neighborhood centers were still what they, what they were because of the South Shore Plaza took business. Look what happened to Quincy Square when the South Shore Plaza came online. Quincy Square was a booming business district. South Shore Plaza comes online and it hasn't recovered since. It's, it's just not an easy thing. You just have to be positive and keep trying to improve the business climate as best we can and hope that more mom and pop stores start to take root. That has begun, you see it happening and I think it continues to happen.
Thank you, Brian. Jane Hackett, you're next.
Thank you. I think in order to attract business, it's, it is, I think, a critical, it's a critical path that we have to go down. And I do believe it begins with rezoning and a thorough review of the zoning of Route 18, Route 3A and Route 53, as I mentioned earlier. And again, I believe that all three of them are unique and different. And I believe we can't do it just in isolation. I think we need to speak to the Waymouth Business Council that has now started, the Waymouth, excuse me, the Waymouth Chamber of Commerce that has been formed, the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, and take a look at some of the proposals that have been proposed and denied. For instance, I can think of a restaurant that was denied that didn't have enough parking, but if we had perhaps adjusted, if the zoning had been adjusted so there could be shared parking with other businesses, that, that restaurant may have been able to come in and may have been able to come in and thrive. I think we need to take a look at what has not worked and see if there are ways we can change our zoning in order to make it work. I believe we do need to invest in Columbian Square, Jackson Square, Bridge Street and all of our, in, in Waymouth Landing in order to make some public-private partnership in order to boost those and make them more attractive. However, the rent situation is in extreme detriment to businesses coming in to Waymouth in the squares. The rents are outrageous and that is something that we cannot control. And then again, I do believe in strong funding of education as a way of attracting community, families and businesses to the town of Waymouth.
Thank you, Jane. You'll be, for the next question, Jane, you'll be the one to kick this one off. The final question for the night is, as demonstrated by the Prop 2.5 override, Waymouth faces budgetary issues and constraints. What cuts or changes can be made in order to improve Waymouth's fiscal outlook?
There are very few changes that can be made within the operating budget that would not have an immediate impact on a service delivery. Be that the senior center with a staff of, I believe, three, a planning department with a staff of four, the town clerk's office. They're all very small departments that have been cut and cut and cut and cut and cut. They haven't had an expense increase in at least 12 years. And so have had to go to larger departments and make reductions in police and reductions in fire and reduction in schools and reductions in police and reduction in fire and reduction in schools. The answer is revenue. And we have Southfield as an opportunity and we have potential redevelopment as an opportunity, again, along our commercial corridors. We also have a tremendous challenge with benefits, health insurance, pensions becoming larger and larger and larger portion of our overall budget and absorbing more and more of our revenue and leaving less for departments. That's not a town of Waymouth issue, that is a Commonwealth of Massachusetts issue and United States of America issue. I do not have, I do not have an answer on how we can fix it. I am very concerned about cuts going any deeper than they have gone. I've seen the results in, in the schools, I've seen the results in response times in public safety and I do not want to see a reduction in services and elder services or libraries for that matter. But there is very little creativity left within the budget. And I really, with the, out the $2 million from Southfield this year, I'd be very concerned about what our service delivery would be looking like in the current fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Bob Collin, you're next, same question.
On the 2.5 override, the override that the citizens of Waymouth voted no one, I voted no one at the council chambers and I also voted no one and when I voted, I voted no. And I know we do need money, but one thing about that override I didn't like, it was all or nothing. Either you voted for the police, fire, the schools, the DPW. There wasn't a menu override. A menu override is you can pick all, some or none. And I'm a firm believer on any override and overrides can be successful if they're a menu override that you can pick and choose. And if we did have a menu override, I'm sure that some of those departments, two or three of them would have been funded and we wouldn't be having a serious problem now. But what can you do? You know something? It's basic math. It's, as Council Brian says, you know, it's, the problem's a, it's a simple thing. Our budget, we, all we can raise is $140 million, maybe 140, because of the 2.5 override. You only go there, so that's as far as you can go. So when you have the police and the fire and there's more expenses there, what you do? And it's more expensive, there's no money going there. So you have to cut services. We're cutting services on the police and fire, we're cutting services because you don't have the money. And, and the only thing we have going for us, only thing, and I'm so happy that L-style wants to go to 3 million. There's no sense in kidding anybody. If I only get $10 in my, in my wallet and the meal cost 12, well, I can't get it. Simple as that. We don't have the money, but with commercial going and especially up here, that new growth, new growth can expand the 2.5 base. And so every year that 2.5 would increase if the new growth, say if we had 100, say 103 or 4 million in new growth. Well, you can go 2.5% on that new growth plus, plus what you had on the base you had before. So now the 2.5 is more percentage-wise, just like if you had the override. If the override passed, there would have been a 2.5 override the next fiscal year. You would have had, a base would have been higher. So, so you're getting more income in. You know, one thing you gotta realize is, and I've said it, our real estate tax and you look at it and you have nice homes up here, but you know, you're really paying a cheap real estate tax. I mean, that, that is, that is, that is unbelievable. You know, 13, $12.90 compared to, Hingham is twice that in our commercial. So I'm kind of happy now it's low because these homes up here are going more expensive. So it will happen, somebody wants to come in, you can get a mortgage rate at 4%, 30 years. Now when they come in and they got a low tax rate, so it's gonna generate more people coming up here and buying. The economy will just generate. That's just on the residential. And on the commercial, when you can go get some property and you can get it for $22.24 on the, on the commercial, that's per thousand, that's pretty cheap. And I think what we've got going out, even though it's, taxes are low, it's an incentive. And as anything else, you put the incentive and they'll come. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Next is Mike Malice, same question. What change, cuts or changes can be made in order to improve Waymouth's fiscal outlook?
When I was first elected back in 2000, I had stated that I would never vote a tax increase to the residents of Waymouth. With that being said, this council voted in June to put the override question on the ballot. I did vote in favor of that because I felt this town needed help. The people did not pass it. That vote didn't pass. We have a tight budget. We needed that money. That's why we voted to put that question on the ballot and give the people of Waymouth the choice to invest in the town of Waymouth. There's no room in our budget at all to move anything unless we dissolve departments. We're very fortunate in the town of Waymouth to have the employees that we have and the department heads that we have, chief of police, fire chief, DPW. Those guys, what they do with the money they have is amazing, you know, that we're able to support this town. There's no way we can cut anything in that budget. I mean, the library basically funds itself through donations and the friends at the library. The money from Southfield is a big help to the town of Waymouth. I mean, we'd be in trouble if we didn't have it. There's just no way of being creative with this budget at all and we're just there, basically.
Thank you, Mike. Brian McDonald, you're next.
As I've said, there's, there's not a lot of wiggle room in the budget and we wouldn't have, never have put an override question on the ballot if we didn't believe it was absolutely necessary. And I've often said that I'm, I'm not, I'm not afraid of putting an override question on the ballot because we're not raising anybody's taxes. We're asking the citizens if you want to raise additional revenue, pay a little more in taxes in order to gain better services, gain better schools, better police, better fire safety protection, increase in the long run, increase your property values. The, the residents-
The residents spoke and that's what it is and we'll live with it. The good news moving forward is the budget that is in place for this fiscal year was in place prior to the ballot question, so nothing has to be cut. What we have moving forward is what we have moving forward. When I got elected to the Board of Selectmen, I know I bring up ancient history a lot, but history's important for perspective. History is, the past is prologue to the future, I guess, and I guess we saw that on this override question. But when I got elected to the Board of Selectmen back before the '90s, there were 137 firefighters on the fighter pod. I think there's, what was, 86 now? Is that the number? There were 117 police. There's 76, 77? How many?
90.
There's 90. Well, that's good, but still significant reductions, huge reductions in what was going on in the schools and teachers and that sort of thing. We have incredibly dedicated public servants that work for the town shore. Can you, do you see one leaning on a shovel? Yeah, we can all pick out the one that's not quite carrying their weight. But what the teachers and educators in the town do is phenomenal, given the constraints they're under. And the police and fire work very, very hard. The drug unit, that's a systemic problem, endemic problem across the country. And they, the Weymouth Drug Task Force, the people on the drug department enforcement area do a great job, but it's a huge problem. We can try to be more creative, gain greater efficiencies, try to consolidate this, that, and the other thing, but it's just tweaking and making small, little incremental improvements in cash flow, if you will, but it doesn't solve the problem. I don't think we have a mismanagement problem. I think we have a revenue problem. And that's why the ballot question was put on the ballot. We talk about Southfield as being a salvation. Yeah, you want to know why? It is. When it generates that builder, what it's going to generate, it's going to be huge. Renegotiating that contract with, at SCIF, the energy plant over in North Weymouth and getting what we should be getting from that plant as opposed to what we are getting, I believe we're probably getting less than half of what we should be getting in tax revenue from that, from that deal that was put in place back in the '80s. We have to move in those directions, look forward to those. And I think Jane is right in terms of rezoning along corridors. That might give us the ability to generate bigger businesses than what is now in place. But just have to be positive and keep moving in the right direction and look forward to being a part of that.
Thank you, Brian. And next, Chris Perbiano.
Yeah, I basically agree with most of everything that everybody set up here. The cuts have already been made. There are some little things, some consolidations. Do we need two IT departments? Maybe we can consolidate IT departments between the schools and the administration. So there are small, little pieces that can happen, but there's opportunities that are going by the wayside today. For instance, and it's made the papers over the last few days, is the Fire-Based Ambulance Service. Not saying that Fallon was the right or wrong choice, but we don't know what was out there. Perhaps, and just perhaps, if we would have put an RFP out, we might have been able to get some revenue influx into the town. Whether that was from Fallon or a competing company, we don't know because we didn't try. So there are things that we can look at and having a fresh set of eyes on the council and administration, looking at things that maybe are not as transparent as they should be, might bear some funds. But again, it's not going to make up for the lack of revenue that we sorely need. Schools are so underfunded. Police, fire, DPW are millions of dollars underfunded. Southfield definitely is going to help out. Not only is Southfield going to help out, but with the new zoning changes that hopefully will come to bear, we're going to be able to expand businesses outside the boundaries of Southfield, generate new families in our neighborhoods, in our villages, and definitely create a new energy that we definitely need for Weymouth. But cuts alone, there aren't any cuts that we can do at this point to make a significant difference to our financial future.
Thank you, Chris. Well, that ends the question and answer portion of the evening. Pat O'Connor, let you start thinking. You'll be the first to make closing remarks. At this point, we'll have two-minute closing remarks from each candidate. So with that, Pat?
Thank you, Chris. I didn't address that last question, so I'll get to that in my closing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll incorporate in my closing.
Did I skip you all together?
My closing took me two minutes.
I did. Tell you what, Pat, go ahead and answer it, then we'll double it up. You can do first and close your remarks.
No, no, I can do both at the same time.
Oh, you get four minutes now. How's that?
It's too long, too. No, I truly do believe that there are no cuts to be made in this current budget. I think Chairman Malice does a great job. Council McDonald, Council Hackett are also on the Budget Management Committee. And every single time that we call in these department heads, there's literally the same level of frustration that we've had for over a decade. It's this again. There's not enough money for hires. There's not enough money to open our fire headquarters. There's not enough money for overtime. We have police officers who are working eight-hour shifts being held over because there's not enough police officers to cover those shifts, that work in 16-hour clips. These are real problems that face the town of Weymouth. And to even talk about potentially cutting any of those departments, I think, is unheard of. The reason why we came together and proposed the override is because we live in a community that's 14 miles south of Boston, as I said before, one of the greatest cities in the world, educational hub, medical hub. We have a great fabric in this community. And for us to come up with the same problems year after year after year, which is, let's try and make ends meet, I think shouldn't be the direction of this community. Our direction of this community should be, let's invest. Let's see what we can do, how great this community, which I already think is a great community, how much greater we can be if we make these investments to our police, to our fire, to our DPW, and especially to our education. And see what this brings. See if a $284 increase in property taxes might yield a $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 return on home value. There was a lot of reasons why we decided to go to the taxpayers of this community and say, are you willing to invest a little bit more money to make our community an ever greater community, to live and to work and to raise a family? That's sort of been the gist of the work of the council since I've been on it for the past 10 years, has been to do everything in our power to make sure the community of Weymouth is one that people are proud of. I, for one, am proud of this community. I think that in the past 10 years, we have made great strides. There was still a lot of problems facing our community, as I've outlined and as my fellow counselors and Chris have outlined this evening. We're tackling these problems every single day. We get the phone calls, we hear about the constituent issues, and on the council level, Legion Field, we got it done. Southfield, we got it done. We led on these issues. We want to continue to lead on these issues. And it's something that, as far as me personally, I've dedicated my entire adult life, I ran at 20 years old, I'm 31 now, representing this community. I love this community. I was born here. I graduated high school here. I want to continue this work and I want to continue working for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Jane, you're next for the closing remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, Eric, and the Southfield Resident Association and Citizens for a Better Weymouth for hosting and broadcasting this evening. Again, I would just like to reiterate that I very much enjoy being a counselor-at-large and representing you and the citizens of Weymouth across town. I take the role, but I try not to take myself particularly seriously. I make every effort to be informed on matters that are before us, I seek others' opinions and expertise on issues, and I vote how I believe is in the best interest of Weymouth. I try to work collaboratively with my colleagues, the administration, and the neighborhood associations in order to get the best outcomes possible for Weymouth. And again, as I mentioned earlier, just because we disagree on some issues, doesn't mean that we don't come together and work very closely together on the next issue. And we do try to have some fun along the way. I'm seeking reelection so I can continue to work for Weymouth with my colleagues and with the citizens and work for a better Weymouth. Some of the things I'm looking forward to working on is fighting the compressor station and the expanded gas line in North Weymouth and working to take a look at our zoning on Route 18, Route 53, and Route 3A. I have been talking about this since I decided to run for office back in 2007. And we were successful together as a council in implementing some components of architectural standards as guidelines for zoning projects throughout town, and I'd like to see us build upon that success. The election is Tuesday, November 3rd. I respectfully ask that you consider casting one of your five votes for me, who I'm the last name on the ballot, Jane Hackett, Counselor-at-Large. Thank you very much for this evening and your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Jane. Bob Collin, you're up next.
Thank you. It really comes right down to, Southfield's success will solve all our economic problems. In the future, we could be getting $20 million extra revenue. That will really solve our problems. And that's it. It is Southfield, that 3 million, if we go up to 3 million square feet of business. And another thing I have, and I think is very important, is the fire station being open on Broad Street. It's a, it's a public safety problem and we do not have sufficient police personnel. Response time is up. Normally it should be four, five minutes. It could be up to eight or nine minutes. It could be up to 12 minutes. And I think that's very important and I won't let go of that. But you know something I enjoy this evening? I always enjoy dealing with people. I just like people. That's the reason I'm a counselor. That's the reason I have the office hours. I have them because I want to listen to you. And I learn so much. And the people who come in, and we argue too in my office. But with Southfield, I had some gentlemen, we argue, dispute, and what have you, and Steve Lamart had to break up a few issues there. But I enjoy it. I enjoy it. I enjoy being a counselor. I enjoy being with these fellow counselors. I have a great, sometimes I'm tired of working many hours on this council. We do a lot of studying and analyzing. Do you have a study and analyze for Southfield? They must have, not Southfield, for Stalwart. They made so many different revisions. I was going crazy. I had about five or six, and I'm going back and forth because I didn't trust them. I had to check every corner and every and or but. But you know, I have the visiting hours. I hope to see you. Come up to visit me, say hello. I'll even buy you a cup of coffee. I'm number one on the ballot and I'd appreciate your vote, and I do need your support. I need everybody's support. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. I want to make sure I don't miss anyone. Chris Perbiano, you're next.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Kevin. Thanks for, everybody for hosting and coming out this evening for this forum. Southfield Neighborhood Association is the only neighborhood association that's hosted a forum for the councils at large, so thank you for stepping up. November 3rd is the election day. I would appreciate your vote. I'm number three on the ballot. And what I bring to the table is something new. I bring 30 years of business experience. And one of the things I learned over the course of my career is I don't have all the answers. And I rely on good people that I surround myself with to give me thoughts, ideas. And I take those ideas, collaborate with them, and come up with the best solutions. And I think that's something that I can bring to the council, is listening to you, the public. What we're having right now, and as evidenced in so many different forums throughout Weymouth, is the lack of participation by our residents. And it's disturbing that so few people are determining so many things for so many people. And I'd like to open up that process, to increase public participation and get more ideas, more thoughts. There's somebody out there who knows, who has some of the answers that we're not, that we don't. And by engaging with the public, we'll be able to bring together a much better place for us to raise our families, our friends, and basically having a better community. I'd appreciate your support on November 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Mike Malice.
I'd like to thank the Southfield Neighborhood Association for hosting this event tonight and for everybody that came out. And again, welcome to Weymouth for all the new people up here at Southfield. Residing my entire life in the town of Weymouth, serving as Counselor-at-Large for the past 15 years, the town of Weymouth and its residents are very important to me. I've always prided myself in the level of service that I give my constituents. I believe that an elected official needs to be accessible, committed, and dedicated, and responsive. Currently, I serve as Chairman of the Budget Committee. I have a great committee. I am serving as Chairman of Parks and Recreation for 13 years. I'm now Vice Chairman, but I followed through, took a lead role with the administration and my fellow counselors on bringing back Legion Field to the town of Weymouth. I'm also a member of the Education Committee and the Senior Committee. Serving on such a wide variety of committees gives me a great opportunity to be out in the community with our youths and our seniors. I feel that I bring a lot to the table. It was asked about what we bring to the table. I think experience is a lot. We have a great team here. We have a great group of counselors. We all work together. I want to continue to be part of that. I think that we have a lot coming up here, the Southfield project. As I said, two years ago, we sat here, it was doom and gloom. Look at it now, and I want to continue to be a part of that. So I ask you to vote for Mike Malice, number two on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And to close out the evening, Brian McDonald.
Thank, excuse me. Thank you, Eric. I appreciate those folks who came out tonight. I agree with Chris, you know, citizen participation is huge and the town council is very open. If a citizen has something they want to come talk to us about, through Bob's office hours or through coming in, coming before the council, we're open. We're here, we're willing to listen. At-large counselors have more of a global view of the town than district counselors. We work with Counselor Smart on issues that affect his district. We work with Counselor Lacy on the issues that have faced his district, the Landing. Counselor Harrow in North Weymouth has been a tremendous leader in the effort to try to fight and stop the compressor station, which I believe we can win. It's not going to be easy, but we have to keep the pressure on. But North Weymouth has been dumped on for a lot of years and there's a resentment there to that. But we look at things more globally. We look, you know, again, Weymouth now is five neighborhoods, North Weymouth, East Weymouth, Weymouth Landing, Homestead Area, South Weymouth, Colombian Square-type area, and now Southfield. And as a counselor, I try to take in everything I can from the district councils. They're the ones that are in their district. Typically, most of the constituent type of issues go to a district counselor and try to absorb what they bring to the table for the issues and move and make the proper and the right decision, all the while thinking and acting in what is in the best interest of the town of Weymouth. Weymouth is a great town. I've been fortunate and proud to have served as long as I have in the town. I think experience is huge in everything. Business experience is huge, so government, I guess, experience should be a huge bonus as well. I think I have a background and experience that's valuable to the town. I work very well with my fellow counselors and I look forward to serving another two years. I respectfully ask for your consideration and your vote on November 3rd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And a round of applause for... Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the six candidates for, you know, stepping up to run. It's a huge time commitment. I know the constituents, myself, and everyone who lives away with appreciates the work and the hours that it takes to do this job. Not everyone can do it and we really appreciate you guys stepping up to offer your service. So thank you. Also, thank you for coming to the forum tonight. I thank you to the audience for coming as well. The vote is November, Tuesday, November 3rd. If you are not able to vote that day, make sure you run to Town Hall and grab an absentee ballot. And, oh, and that's right. One last thing, this entire forum, as well as the forum yesterday with the two mayoral candidates, will be posted online. Look for Facebook from the Citizens for a Better Weymouth. I'm sure it'll be on Everything Weymouth as well. We'll find a way to post it as far and wide as we can so everybody has access to the link. Thank you all for coming and have a great night.